All right, well, welcome to the second edition of our committee of the whole format. We acknowledge we reside on the traditional lands of the Suk and Sianu First Nation. And we have one pink to add to the agenda, and from there we have approval for the agenda. Moved by Mayor Little, seconded by Councilor Shukin, on favor. Right, and we'll just, we don't have any presentations, so we'll skip right to public participation. If you have anyone that would like to come up and tell us what they think. Is it still echoing? I'm trying. Hold that button. Thank you, Patty. I love having friends who look after me. Um, to Machozen, Mayor and Council CFO and CAO. See, it's really echoey, yeah. Last Sunday, I walked along Weir's Beach to the stairs and found they weren't safe to access. Sign at the top of the stairs on Williamhead Road indicates the trail is temporarily closed, but there are no signs or barriers at the beach where it's most dangerous. Sunday was the first time I had seen the stairs since their completion in August 2024, and given their present state, I am very unimpressed. Fertile roots have been cut and the adjacent bank excavated of brush. Does not appear stable and looks as though it will not return to its original angle. Of repose, apparently, is what they say. Although this has been a dry winter, soil is already sloughing onto the steps. When the usual torrential winter rains return, I would expect the stairs to be covered in dirt. However, this is relatively minor compared to the mess of debris where the stairs should safely and securely meet the beach. They do not because they washed away less than six months after the job was completed. The extent of the failure has me questioning both structural support and possible oversight by district staff. I would appreciate answers to the following. What was the total cost of the project, including staff time, to build the stairs? And which department's budget funded the project? Will the company who constructed the stairs rebuild and properly reinforce them at no cost to the district? Were the stairs subject to a geotechnical or engineering assessment prior to, um, prior to construction? And did they sign off on completion? Were the designer materials such as the mesh that was intended to contain gravel and the green landscape rebar approved by district staff prior to building to ensure they were of adequate strength to withstand the winter high tides and storms? So what are the next steps? Pun intended. Will the cost of repairs be passed on to taxpayers? And will other future projects such as the Duke Road East Trail be put on to the back burner while the Weir's Beach stairs are repaired? Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor, sorry. Maybe during my update, I can provide some background information and get some input from.
Sure, that'd be great. Thanks.
Leannor Davidson, 900 Spaceside Lane, and I see this as part of the Healthy Communities subject. So I am representing the West Shore Quilting Guild, and we are having our big show at the Wanda Fuka Rec Center. So you sponsor them, and we are having a two and a half day show where we'll have quilts, children's things, vests, um, and I am representing the media and pumping it all for all of you to come. And they're taking the ice out and putting us in for two and a half days. And so I asked to have one of these put up in the main hall. And we've done all the quilting stores, all Vancouver Island, some in Calgary, and some in the Fraser Valley, and it's a very large show, and it's a happy event. And this is our advertisement. We make these little tiny purses with the ad. We give them out, and we give them about 2,000 of them because people love it. It is happy. And so, um, I'd like to leave some of these in a little box, and we come and replenish it. Margaret Newman from Machozen is also doing it. We're both doing it together. So we've, uh, we'll be coming here. I'll be going to Lankards, Colwoods meetings, and the same thing. And because we all sponsor the Wanda Fuka Rec Center, I'd ask to have this put up. And I'll leave you some of the pincushets and happy events for the municipalities.
When did you say it was?
It's at the Wanda Fuka Rec Center. We're taking April 3rd to the 5th. And you'll have some of these with the little brochures anyways, and we'll put the postings up. And they're pretty well all over the city at the quilting shops, municipalities, uh, you name it, huh, the art shows and et cetera. And so we have 180 members, and some I know sitting at the table are members too. So it's a great event, very happy, and lots of people come to it. So, all over the island. So I look forward to seeing most of you too.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Hope it's a good turnout.
Good evening. Oh, sorry. Happy medium. Brent Donaldson, Charles Tercourt. I am going to be speaking briefly this evening on the proposed Green Biola Toolbox. Just a brief snapshot of development permit areas. There was a development permit area in the Happy Valley area, Neil Road and Glen Forest for 22 years, and it was based on flood concerns. There was a lot of hype about lifting that DPA, which was actually for the floodplain. And there was a citizens group started called the Westman Chosen Repairs, and I was their president. There was 200 members, all property owners. The, uh, DPA itself was illegal, and certainly if you peruse the Local Government Act, you'll see that development permit areas aren't designed to control density. And certainly, I'm looking at this document, I'm getting a sense of that. Respectfully, uh, I do understand that Mias has done a lot of work on this. I did attend the Mias meeting on November 26th, 2024, and I certainly don't recall this document being circulated or certainly discussed to the degree it is that I see in front of me tonight. This is a very punitive document to landowners. It depreciates their property and it limits their land use. Every property owner in Machozen could be affected by this, and certainly there should be extremely amount of public input. So the ramifications are realized by those folks. Also, on a side note, and in this, this is just my observation, there seem to be some concerns about our staff's ability to manage developments and development permits and approval process. I believe we have good staff, and I believe that the consultants that we hire are more than capable of managing streamside protection repair zones. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would care to speak tonight? Okay, we'll move on. We'll move on to adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole of January 13th. Moved by Counselor Donaldson, seconded by Mayor Little. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all in favor? And then the adoption, uh, or the receipt of minutes, we're going to take them all as a group, but before we make a motion, is there any corrections anyone would need, needs to make on any of the minutes? Counselor Donaldson?
I don't have any corrections, but I do have a couple of comments. If I could have that even after we adopt them, there's no change to it, just inquiring.
Maybe after, because I've been instructed that we're not supposed to allow any comments on them, but later. Any corrections? I do have one for the Healthy Community Committee, and that is that the minutes do say that was regret for the meeting from Chris Pratt and Peter Havers, but they actually are no longer, they have resigned from the committee, so they're no longer on the committee. So they shouldn't have been listed in there. So with that, I'll take a motion for receipt of the minutes of the Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee of January 21st, the Healthy Community Advisory Select Committee of January 28th, the Environmental Advisory Select Committee of January 28th. Moved by Counselor Shukin, seconded by Counselor Gray. Any discussion on that, Ben? All in favor? Okay, business advising. So I will turn this one over to Counselor Gray. This is the Environmental Advisory Select Committee recommendations. On page 19.
Thank you. So, um, I provided some background material. I hope that people have been able to take a look at it. The first page of the, of the material is, um, sort of a handout laying out what the Capital Regional Invasive Species Partnership, um, people are recommending around in treatment of invasives, and in particular about Himalayan blackberry. The second sheet is what's called an invasives curve, and it shows a picture of, you know, how we, how we look at invasives generally. And then the third part of the package are number sheets that show how the partnership is addressing the different invasives in our area. So the invasives curve, it shows, the idea there is it shows you that if, if we find an invasive plant, that's going to be difficult to deal with. On the left-hand side, and there's very few of them, then we can move to eradicate, or we'll attempt to eradicate the plant. As we move to the right on the graph, that means that the, um, plants are, you know, well-established here, widespread, and we're no longer looking to eradicate, but instead working to manage the plants. And I think I described before, um, about, well, more than a year ago, someone spotted a plant called an egg leaf spurge up on, I think it was up on Chapel Heights. And I registered that in the province on the computer, and with my name and address and where it was located. Half an hour later, I got a phone call from the province, and they said the next day they'd be there to remove the plant. So that's what happens on the far left-hand side. The really damaging things that come, and you can see them listed. They will be the ones, um, in the CRIS document. That's the partnership document, the red ones. In other words, we want to get rid of those before they spread anywhere. Then we have, um, so we have to, you know, in terms of the district's activities and how, what, what's going on in the region with the different parks and, um, well, the CRIS involves not just the Capital Regional Governments, but also the federal government and the province in terms of the parks and the lands that they owned in the penitentiary and other places like that. But together in the partnership, the idea is that we work together, and, and there's agreement basically on these lists and how we, how we tackle things. So with Himalayan blackberry, it's, you know, widespread, it's everywhere. And the idea is that we don't really work to eliminate it, but rather remove a plant if we don't think it's in the right location. Otherwise, we focus our activities in parks and ecosystems that were at risk. And two examples of that here in Machozen would be the Devonian Group, who've been active, I think, decades now, and they're removing blackberry in Donian Park. And the ecosystems at risk, we see the Bilston Big Watershed Habitat Protection Group. And a number of us have participated in removing blackberries with them in the riparian areas. So I'm, then the motion that you see here then is about, the motions, if I just take the first three of them, are in relation to following the partnership program in terms of, um, regional practices. And then the second motion, the second, um, second motion is that, um, we involve Public Works along with myself on the CRIS group, and I'll explain that in a moment. And then the third is if we're running into any problems and can't figure things out, well, then certainly Mias could be happy to do some research, but I expect that would rarely occur. The recommendation from CRIS, remember, it came up and, uh, became a bit excited in terms of, do we remove them in our boulevards, you know, or do we do that as a, you know, exercise of our staff and working with others? And then the other question was, what about the use of pesticides? So the recommendation on blackberries is generally speaking, you remove it with a matic, a shovel, whatever, and you go back and just repeated, um, removal of the plant where you can find. And then only with extreme caution is, are herbicides used. And so, so that's sort of the package. Now, the question about herbicides comes up because, um, what we heard at the last meeting, I wasn't totally caught up, but we did hear that a couple of our Public Works staff are now being trained to use pesticides, herbicides. And up until now, what's been going on, like in, in, at least during our council's existence, I've been attending the CRIS meetings, and I'm kind of the liaison, the bridge between the CRD and the district. And so there have been an application of herbicides in Tower Point, that's a CRD park, and then outside of Tower Point on boulevards, and that's coordinated with the CRD and their contractor who has the pesticide abilities. Now, if we, we're now training our own staff to do that job, and so we're going to lose the connection with the partnership program. So I've talked to our CAO and, and also to the supervisor of Public Works. And the idea is that, one, there's two who are being trained or have been trained, and they'll come with me to the meetings, and it's a Zoom meeting, but just alternating so that they become sort of part of that bigger program. And whether or not we want to keep a counselor on that in time, we can come back and talk about. But everybody else on the committee, the CRIS meeting, are staff. And of course, they're big agencies, the federal government, the province, and, and all the other governments in the CRD. I'm the only political person there, so it makes sense the staff get involved and integrated over time. And so that explains the second, um, motion, I hope. So the idea is that we have a regional approach. We, as best managers, practice is agreed amongst the partnership that our staff are being trained, so we better get them involved, so they're, you know, getting into the culture of, of not too much pesticide use, basically, and then appropriate use. And then Mias is around in the event issues come up, but not as a primary role, but just there. So are there any questions to that before I move the motion?
Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, I, first, um, so you've explained to us that you are representative liaison on CRIS. And in the second, um, motion here, you're suggesting that we send a staff member also to join you, um, at these meetings, correct? And so, uh, speaking with my finance chair hat on, and, um, the capacity of our staff and the amount of work they have to do, I'm not sure that sending a Public Works, um, staff member outside the district away from their daily work within the district is something that, um, we are able to afford, so I'm, I'm just cautious of that part of things.
Counselor Shukin?
Thank you, Counselor App. Technical question on the motion itself, are all four of these considered the motion that you want to advance, or do you want to take them separately?
I don't mind doing those separately.
Okay, okay. I just, and a, a general comment. There's, there's something about the, that sort of the, the whole, looking at this as a whole, that, that I have some misgivings about. And I'll just randomly go through them. I don't, part, part of me asks, like, how much are our staff focused on invasive species? My sense is not particularly unless there's a problem. And, you know, the one example I might give is, I, I understand that our staff were involved in clearing the trail on the Paris Road of blackberries. So I, I wouldn't want that to be impaired at all. But in terms of actually going out and doing invasive species management, I'm, I maybe Mr. Payette can, can, you know, enlighten us further, but I'm not seeing staff being involved in that. That is more something that citizen groups do, like the two you've mentioned. Bilston was actually part of a, um, an effort two weeks ago pulling blackberries on, uh, oh, I forget the creek name now. Martin Brook, thank you very much. And then also, um, goodness, but, but MISC as well. And MISC has taken on a whole bunch of things, like in, um, for example, in, um, Lulithorn Park, I was picking, um, my goodness, I've forgotten the name of the species I've never picked up before, but bluebells. So again, something that's deeper on the, um, on the list itself. So I wouldn't want anything like that to be impaired. Yeah. So again, I, I have to say I do have some misgivings around, you know, noting that Himalayan blackberries is, should be a low priority for Machozen because that might be operationally one of the things that we actually go after. So leave my comments for that right now.
Sorry, Mayor Little.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for this. I have a few misgivings as well. I, I, I just was wondering, this is, you know, is this a high priority? Because we haven't heard a lot of, excuse me, a lot of issues about, um, Himalayan blackberry being a terrible problem in, in Machozen. MISC has, where they've needed to get it holy, uh, dealt with some of the Himalayan, um, blackberry. So two of these in, of the four did come from the Mias, and I'm wondering if the, where the other two came from, um, the other resolutions. So there was two resolutions, um, on page 18, and, and I was just wondering where they are. And then besides that, um, I, I agree with Counselor Donaldson that, that we've been told that Public Works is really stretched to the max. And I'm very reluctant to add something else, uh, to them. I did go as the alternate to the CRIS last term with, uh, Counselor McKinnon, and there were other, um, counselors there, so I'm surprised that it has, um, shifted to only staff, um, as well. And, and, um, I would think that, that any report that you bring back on what was said and what was decided could be given to the, the Public Works, and they would, they would, glad they received them. As far as works at Tower Point go, uh, the CRD will continue to monitor and control and, um, look after that park, so it is a, a CRD park. So I don't think we'll lose our CRD connection there. And, and our Public Works, uh, staff would never go into, uh, Tower Point and doing any work because of the, of the CRD. The MISC group has gone into CRD parks at Matheson, but that was a long negotiation with the CRD, and we had many site visits, and, and they knew which areas we were working in. So, um, they were aware that we were working in a CRD park, and that was sanctioned. The fourth motion is a little bit discombobulated. That Council of the Whole recommend to Council that efforts to control Himalayan blackberry should be low priority, and then it should focus on control. So, control, control. So it's, it's not a priority, but then it should focus on control. So that the wording's a little bit odd, so I'm not exactly sure what that means. And, uh, the, um, I guess the, the district would welcome any, um, advice from Mias regarding the management practices, um, and the issues, but that would be operational as well. So that would be, they would make the decision regarding, um, how best they see, uh, to manage what they've got to manage. And I also agree with Counselor Shukin, is that, that's not the big focus of theirs, is the removal of, of invasives. That's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gray?
Yeah, perhaps I can respond. So thank you very much. I appreciate the, the comments and questions. The, um, so, sort of going backwards perhaps, the motion to say that we will make this a low priority is to, is to make sure that we don't spend a lot of Public Works time on removing Himalayan blackberry, which seemed to be a proposal coming out of, I don't know if it was out of your office, Mayor, where it came from, but we heard about it one day, that there were discussions to do that. I've had quite a few conversations now with Neil West, who's kind of the chair of the MISC group, and, um, sort of searching for, for what to do about that. And lining up perhaps to be controlling, spending time on, um, the blackberry in our ditches and roadside areas. And the question of the use of the pesticides came up, and there was a bit of a flurry about that. So the notion is that we, is to get Council to confirm that we're following, or we're going to be a partner in the partnership, and keep Himalayan blackberries a low priority and only focus on in our parks and in sensitive ecosystems. And I gave two examples of that, Devonian Park. This is generally done by volunteers, not our Public Works staff. When I talk about control, I'll just draw your attention again to this particular, um, graphic. And we have eradicate over here, and control means you're just, you know, if you see one, you don't like it, remove it. Keep it out of the parks and sensitive ecosystems. That's what the word controls referring to as compared to eradicate. So, so that's, those are those thoughts. And if we, um, so it's, I'm not suggesting it be a high priority, I'm trying to push back against the idea that we would spend a lot of time on blackberries by our staff in Machozen. The, but, but if people would like it a higher part, this is just a statement to affirm that. Then the, um, where do the resolutions come from? There were two meetings, November 26th and January 28th, and so those are combined from the two meetings of Mias. So where the question of the staff time comes in was not coming from Mias, didn't come from me. It came from our CAO, who said that our staff are being trained to do this, the pesticide work. So, so I, I'm only trying to catch up to where the CAO is on the topic, not advocating that staff spend any time on this at all. At the moment, I tried to explain a moment ago, that the CRD has a contract that does our pesticide application for us. I'm typically involved in that because they go to Tower Point, then they head to places Japanese Knobby, they go a little further down the road and catch another one. They do some work with, um, Poison Hemlock, at the request of our Public Works people. And so, so I'm, because I'm on CRIS, I'm sort of involved in all that. And I learned in a meeting that our staff are now being trained to do the pesticide application. I thought, I won't have that role anymore. They'll be doing it on their own, so they need to get connected somehow to know what the partnership program is because I won't be notified that they're spraying or not spraying or anything like that. It'll be managed by our staff, so Council won't be involved anymore. So that was, as I described that to me, as I said, well, probably makes sense for our staff then to get into the program and understand what's going on. So perhaps we could turn and through the chair, ask our CAO about the training and rationale for that. I, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, I think that would probably be a good idea because for me, I, uh, I think that if, if the CAO feels that, that it would be valuable for a staff member to attend the CRIS meetings, then that's what we would base it on. I'm not sure how often they are. Are they once a month, or is that how they work?
Um, roughly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, Mr. Payette, could you?
Um, through the chair.
Could I ask Mr. Payette to come to the microphone? I can't.
He's, he's on a microphone there.
Hello. The, this, this, um, topic is taking up quite a bit more time.
Not just staff level, but my time in discussions because there's more invasives than we have staff and budget. So we have to prioritize somehow. And our staff, two members have taken some time to get the minimum level qualification for pesticide use. And it's not, it's not easy. They have to learn, they have a lot to learn. Working with CRISP, I believe, will support them. And the reason I think it's valuable, it's just once a month, it can be done online. They can go into the meeting sort of on their computers right here in the office. But it helps them prioritize better with the amount of time and the minimal budget we have. So for example, we were talking about the product that they need and the quantity and the best way of securing it and then maybe partnering with members of CRISP so that we're not storing the product if we don't have to. So, and the other thing, one of my concerns is I'm listening to members of the community about what their thoughts are on the priority of the invasives. And some, you know, some match CRISP priorities and some don't. So, and so how do I, as your CAO, kind of figure out what the best, what the best priority is for the staff? And so I believe MEASK is our committee, council's committee. I think that we should take their advice and use that as our baseline for prioritization. And then CRISP can, CRISP, being part of CRISP and our guys listening to the CRISP conversation can substantiate priorities. And we make the best bang for our buck. But for sure, we don't have a very big budget for invasives and we're probably losing the battle, of course. And so, all that, all of that put together means that we'll just try and be as efficient as we can with the best education that we can get.
Thank you. Well, I think that kind of explains it as far as a staff member, if they can just be online, that would be, seems useful to me anyway. As far as the motions, I'm wondering whether the last one about the control and the focus and so on, like it seems to me that if they're following the CRISP rankings or guidelines, that that would be covered in the first motion. It says that council follow regional best management practices on a species by species basis. It seems like that covers the last, whether it's blackberries or any of the other species. So anyway, was there any more comments? I think it was Counselor Shukin first.
Through you, Counselor, rapid question to Mr. Payet. Mr. Payet, are you, do you foresee a role for staff, like in terms of invasive eradication? Because I've actually not heard that before, other than again, the blackberries. It's fine, I don't, yeah, but there's a lot that goes on I don't know about. Counselor Gray was mentioning the black knapweed and the Japanese, sort of forget. Okay. The, would staff potentially be, would our staff potentially be involved in that?
They're going to be involved with, with whatever you call it, eradicating invasives in certain areas, priority for sure. They are planning to, and they have planned to do some work in some pressure areas. So on public, you know, on boulevards and around some of our key areas, for sure. Yeah.
Counselor Donaldson and then Counselor Gray.
Thank you. So I appreciate the Himalayan blackberry being a low priority for Machozen. And what we have done, and I suspect we will continue to do as an example, where there's a massive amount of it, is the Paris Road roadside trails, it joins up with the Hillman Trail, basically is mowed down. And similarly along the, the Medill Trail, which is an internal trail and the, and these are just local ones as examples, the Rocky Point roadside trail, which also is done during our brushing times. So those are the ones that we've been doing for years, not eradicating, but just keeping them held back. They actually end up forming a hedge row of sorts and nesting area for birds. I think how, one of the reasons, or maybe one of the things that came up recently, as Counselor Gray has said, regarding our staff being involved was we, over at the school, we have blackberries coming up through pavement around the cage area and in the parking area. So I understand doing some eradication there. I do know in other areas, the digging and the shoveling up, sure, certainly is things, are things we can do. And CRD is doing their part. Again, I'm still, I have reservations, I have Public Works doing more than they need to on that. A little bit of history, the West Shore Parks and Recreation used to have staff always at their table. And that model has turned back to, or turned to council liaisons being there. And I don't know too much about the makeup of how CRISP works or who sits at the table. I know at the library, we have council liaisons and citizen representatives from different communities. But none of these have staff representatives. So I don't know if CRISP maybe does, this is something new, whether it's at the table or online, it still does take time away from daily duties.
Counselor Gray.
So I have no argument with council at all about the point of view that our Public Works shouldn't be doing this, or perhaps shouldn't have their pesticide application. I was simply trying to follow the direction of the CAO on this. What I'm aware of so far, as the mayor has said, is that we have, excuse me, treatment done at the moment, herbicide treatments done annually and sometimes a second time at Tower Point. And when they come, the contractor, they talk to our Public Works guys, public works guys, and do a couple of other spots. I mentioned the Japanese knotweed, I mentioned the poison hemlock. That's what I'm aware of. I'm not aware we're doing any other treatments, in particular, in the district. But learning that we were going to be getting the, we've got the training, I said, oh, oh, we better get those people involved because I can no longer be the bridge. I won't know what's going on day to day. Up until now, I've known because we're contracting to CRD and I'm involved in that transaction because of my role on CRISP. I assure you, I'm the only council on CRISP. It's quite an exciting thing that the council is there compared to everybody else, for all the staff, the Public Works people who do this work around. And I'm happy to be there. It's not about me trying to avoid work, I'm trying to make it come together so we use the least amount of pesticide possible in Machozen. That's my goal here. And it came up about treating blackberry and I thought, my gosh, why would we be doing that? And we've been all been involved in those discussions. So these motions were meant to bring it together and rationalize what we're doing. They're not meant to do anything else. If it's a desire of the council, that our Public Works staff not be doing pesticide application, I think we can just make that recommendation. And we'll turn back to contractors for the very few sites that there are.
Perhaps we could just take these motions one at a time then?
Sure.
Through you, a question to Counselor Gray. The CRISP meetings are during the day typically?
Yep.
Yeah, they're kind of at, they're about 11:30 to 12:30, something like that.
Mayor Little. Yeah, the Tower Point, when the CRD in the past have done the eradication, the spot applications of the black knapweed, they have also gone into other areas of Machozen that aligns with Tower Point. So they did see some black knapweed at the entrance to the Blaney Park. And so they did do spot treatments and put up signages as well, as long, as well as along Annie Jackson Place. So technically that is not CRD land, but they had reports that the black knapweed had spread from the Tower Point CRD park into Machozen proper. So they did do that and with forewarning to the district and also signage for the residents.
That's correct. And then we pay an invoice for that work when they work outside the park for us, all coordinated by the Public Works people. And of late, I guess I have been involved in that too. So I'm just saying, if our Public Works people begin to do that without the involvement of the CRISP, that's the whole issue I'm trying to bring to the fore, to reduce the amount of pesticides, frankly.
Mayor Little. Yeah, and also the notion that blackberries should be controlled or the priority for blackberries, it didn't come from my office. It wasn't something that was initiated by me. And I can barely remember discussing it. I think it was with a council presentation from MISC, which is not a select committee of Machozen Council, but it is a community group.
So I'll make the first motion. And this is, the committee of the whole recommend that council follow regional best management practices for invasive species on a species by species basis.
Okay, that's moved by Counselor Gray, seconded by Counselor Shukin. Any more discussion on this?
Just a comment. You know, I, I think I can support this motion, but in reality, it's not council following regional best practices, it's the CAO and staff. And I guess my question, if I could to Mr. Payet, Mr., if I could throw a question to Mr. Payet through you, is, Mr. Payet, is this an intrusion into operations at all? Do you see it that way?
Maybe the word follow might be not the best word because that has sort of an action, a connotation to it. So we could just reword it, our friendly wording change on the follow, like recommend or something like that. Counselor Gray?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Counselor Shukin's saying. And if he's second to the motion, maybe we could say that council directs staff to follow the regional best management practices. Otherwise, we shouldn't have a representation on CRISP. I mean, it's one or the other. We're either part of the partnership and we're going to do this or we're not. And I'm happy however the council decides. I like the idea of working together with the regional approach because invasives are a regional issue.
Counselor Donaldson.
Through the chair. Counselor Gray, are we not already following regional best management?
Don't know.
Well, can we just change that word then? That was suggested of Mr. Payet, that we just change the, instead of follow, what was the suggestion?
Support or some other word.
Does support, is support acceptable?
So it's the council directs staff to support?
No, council support, regional best.
If I, sure. Might, I wonder if the better wording is something to the effect that staff understand and apply best management practices for invasive species? I think that's what we're considering as the actual on the ground application of it.
Isn't that covered in best practices?
Yeah, okay.
I'm okay with taking the CEO Payet's suggestion. So the motion would read that the committee of the whole recommend that council support regional best management practices for invasive species on a species by species basis.
Okay, that's, you're okay with that, seconding that? Any more discussion? Can you call a question? All in favor? Okay.
The next motion is that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the CEO assign a public works staff member to be a Machozen representative on CRISP alongside, for now at least, Counselor Gray.
Okay, it's moved by Counselor Gray, seconded by Counselor Shukin. Any more discussion on that one? Okay, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Yeah, that is three in favor. That's Mayor Little and Counselor Donaldson opposed. Counselor Gray.
Maybe I can just suggest, if that's not unanimous, perhaps a direction for staff would be to report back on how that's working and the necessity of it, things in time. I'm just, through the chair, just wondering, Mr. Payet, if that would work for you, that we come back and assess that and figure out how necessary it is? We don't really have a lot of use of pesticides in the district. As I mentioned, I'm only aware of a couple of times a year, a couple of areas. And so I'm just suggesting we reevaluate this at some point in the future.
Okay, well, I'm sure if it's a problem, we can look at it again.
Are we talking about the third one? Can't quite hear.
Talking about the fact that a Public Works member attending a CRISP meeting? That's fine, okay. Okay, and Kevin, the next one?
Committee of the whole recommend council ask MEAS to advise the district on invasive best management practices and pesticide use as issues arise.
Moved by Counselor Gray. We have a seconder for that one? Seconded by Counselor Shukin. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm okay to support this one because it does reference that council would ask MEAS if there is an issue that arises. It just wouldn't necessarily come from staff. And I think staff would notice if there was an issue and we can, we can make a call whether there is truly an issue or not, so.
Thanks, Counselor Donaldson.
Thank you. But are we not already doing that? Isn't that like the terms of reference we have in place for MEAS that if councils or staff brings it to our attention, that council then can funnel it down to MEAS for input and advice? Since how, you know, we have some expertise at their committee level. I believe we're already doing that, but perhaps I've misunderstood their purpose.
Well, perhaps Counselor Gray, was there a specific reason that you wanted to have this in here for the committee?
Yeah, this came up in our first meeting on November 26th and we hadn't yet had the chance to go to CRISP, just the way the meetings were scheduled. And the notion here is simply, we're available, MEAS is available to council on any of these things if there's trouble happens. And we just want you to know that because of number, as I say, a flurry of activity, a whole lot of phone calls, a lot of anxiety. Counselor Donaldson and I spent considerable time on the phone and all the worries about all of this had had come up. And we're just saying, look, we're here for you. And that's what the motion was intended to be.
Well, I would support it. I mean, I think it's just like any other committee that, you know, it's just to give advice to council and maybe here, council gets to hear about things that we wouldn't normally hear about. Anyway, any more discussion on that? Call the question, all in favor? That is passed, thank you.
So the next motion, this is about Himalayan blackberry itself, just to keep it as a low priority. Focused on control, meaning you just pull out a plant when bugs you. Or you take them out of the sensitive areas, that's to say, by the repairing areas and/or in the parks. And that's generally done by volunteers. And that's done by volunteers across the CRD. And their staff is also involved in the larger parks. So that the committee of the whole recommend that council, to council, that efforts to control Himalayan blackberry should be a low priority for Machozen and should focus on control, not eradication as per the CRISP rankings.
Great, we have a motion by Counselor Gray, a seconder, seconded by Counselor Donaldson in discussion. Counselor Shukin.
I'm going to vote against this particular motion. I think this is getting into the operations side of things. And I'm not sure that Himalayan blackberry is an actual low priority. I'll just mention, for example, there are trails that we have within our purview where there is an overgrowth of blackberry. So volunteers have come and they've removed them and actually put them by the side of the road and then crews come and remove them. So I'm hoping that that will be able to continue. I just personally, I'm not sure that Himalayan blackberry is a lower priority. And yeah, I don't think I'm going to support this.
Okay, any other discussion? Maybe Counselor Donaldson and then Counselor Gray.
Yeah, I'm reminded of what Counselor Shukin is saying, their volunteers and how much PTAS is out there doing quite a bit of stuff. And I'm just wondering, in the past, we have seen MEAS doing bio blitzes and broombashes and stuff like that. If perhaps there can be some role modeling coming from MEAS and maybe they go out and, or doing it more as an educational campaign, getting people aware of it and doing this, you know, a couple of times a year, just so that people become more stewards. of times a year, just so that people become more stewards of this as well. Being at low priority, but yeah, to manage.
Counselor Gray?
Yes, again, it's a nomenclature issue, perhaps. Low priority means that we've got, it's widespread. We're not going to eradicate it. So you're not going to take all of your public works staff and focus on removing blackberries. Of course, we're removing it from trails. Of course, we're along Pear's Road, and of course, we're along Rocky Point. P-Task is in the parks, removing it all the time. MISC is in the CRD parks, removing it. I've participated, as you have, Counselor Shukin, removing blackberry in the CRD parks as part of MISC's works. That is still low priority. We're not trying to eradicate it. That's the description here that I've been trying to educate people about this evening.
Mary Little?
Yeah, the problem with the verbiage "low priority," if you take an example that Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Shukin had, the Hillman Trail, internal trail, and it's all blackberries all along there. If you say to the public works and to others, this is Himalayan blackberry removal, or cutting back is a low priority, that trail will be completely overgrown. So I'm just, I'm not sure where this is coming from, and I think we're trying to solve a problem that is not a problem. So I can't support the motion. Thank you.
So just to emphasize, the CIO spent an awful lot of time on this. I've unfortunately spent a lot of time on this. That's all come as a result of some discussions that were going on. So we're just trying to calm the waters here and get things sorted out. I'll just read to you again from the notes, which you've already looked at, that "low priority" means a recommendation to focus on control and high-value conservation areas such as parks and ecosystems at risk.
Okay, well, I will support it, because I think control means clearing the trails. But at any rate, how about, unless there's any more discussion, I'll call the question on this one. All in favor? And opposed? Right, that's Counselors Gray, Donaldson, and Epp in favor, and Mary Little and Counselor Shukin opposed.
Now, you'll notice perhaps that there's no recommendation on pesticides here. We brought forward the idea of a pesticide bylaw based on the Callwood work that's been done. And we decided to delay that, not take it up, given workload and staff and things. But a member of MEAS is interested in working on policy, and so we may see something in future on that. But we didn't make it a high priority. So there we go.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next, to be, which is the local government riparian regulations.
Yeah, so again, I provided some material to look at before the meeting, to get an idea of what we're talking about here. And I noticed a letter of support from Alison Leduke about the proposed motion. So I'll just provide a little bit of background. This, of course, is the idea of addressing riparian areas as part of our strategic priorities of council for this year. I've discussed the issue of this referral with the CIO, and he's supportive of this. So riparian means stream-side protection, and it has to do, protecting the riparian areas has to do with the viability of the watershed, the proper functioning of streams, creeks, and wetlands, really caring for the natural assets, providing ecological services, promoting biodiversity and life. Also, caring for the riparian areas has to do with aquifer recharge. So people who are short of water living on wells would be interested in this. You remember about a year and a half, or well, not last summer, the summer before, we had drought conditions, and we received a missive from the Bilston Creek Group. And council said, let's talk to the province. So I did that with our acting CEO at the time, about an intervention on Bilston Creek because it, and other waterways were drying up. There wasn't much the province could do about it, but they said, what you guys need to do is get going and do, put some regulations in place around your riparian areas, if you're concerned about these sorts of things. So that's what we've been thinking about since that time, or I have been. So the provincial riparian protections mean that 30 meters on either side of a waterway are protected. Then a landowner developer who wants to do something engages a qualified environmental professional to come and see if a development could go closer to the creek, closer to the water's edge. Then we look at those reports, and then we decide whether the development can proceed accordingly. The province is also involved in reviewing those reports. It's a complicated exercise. It relies on professionals' reviews and assessments and more. Now, provincial experts are concerned that their own regulations are out of date, given climate change and drought. And that's when we talked to them, they said, it's a very difficult situation, and we think you guys, people need to be more cognizant of protecting their waterways. Now, the district plays a role, because we get a look at those expert opinions, and then we enforce any agreements we have. There's no provincial enforcement of the riparian regulations. So they're out there, and if you follow them, there's no penalty, or if you don't follow them, there's no penalties, and a developer doesn't follow them, there's no penalties. It's really up to the district to deal with that. Now, of course, we don't have environmental expertise on staff, and MEAS has been involved, as you know, when we look at development proposals, and provide recommendations. Now, the provincial law that's in place encourages local governments to enact local regulations themselves to meet or exceed provincial rules. So they say, we've got our system, but if you guys can do it differently, you can. So what I provided for you in the documents was part of the Green Bylaws Toolkit, which MEAS is familiar with, and the particular paragraphs about rural areas, where we're short on staff and have, you know, larger areas to deal with. And the, in order to meet and exceed the rules, the proposal here would be that we have our staff look at this, and give us some advice, basically. So we're at the point of saying, can we get this, dig in a little bit more here? You know, we do know that we need to be doing education as well, but what would we do in a small staff like we have in a rural community? And the kind of thing that you read in the Green Bylaws Toolkit is, the district just says, 30 meters on either side is protected. That's it. They put that in the zoning, environmental, development protection area. And so you get straightforward protection then. You're not calling on a QEP to come in. So you get the best environmental protection for the invaluable natural assets with the least effort and cost to the district. The developer and the landowner also have the least cost, because they don't have to hire people and go through all that process. So there's financial savings for everybody if we pursue this. It is complicated, though, and needs a look from staff, as they say. So we recommended that at MEAS, you know, but we get a better idea of the pros and cons, what kind of grandparenting is needed, as I think we heard from Brent Donaldson, there are people who may be violating it at the moment, but the notion is not to be strong-arming, it's rather getting ourselves set up. They say it would support our climate action plan, supports protecting watersheds, matches our strategic directions, and I've had positive feedback from the CIO to get a look at this. We also have provincial and, there are state local government experts who are available to help us in terms of what we might do and how we might tackle it. Did anybody have any questions?
Counselor Shukin?
Thank you, Counselor Epp. What strikes me about, about the motion here is, there is a significant level of complexity and also workload to getting, to meeting some of the things that are contained in the motion. So potentially doing, building in the regulation into what's likely a bylaw, developing a DPA, but also filtering certain regulations into the zoning as well. So I'm all for strengthening riparian regulation, and where there is an issue enforcement, for sure, where there's been work that's been done, where there's been no approval. What I'm concerned about, and sorry, more so a question, is setting ourselves in a long process where we have other priorities underway as well. And, you know, you think about the amount of time this is going to involve in terms of Mr. Payet, the planner, possibly external consultants to talk about, yeah, filtering it into both zoning bylaw, subdivision servicing bylaw potentially, but also a development permit area, that I think that goes in your OCP. So all of those are, each of them involves significant process. So I'm concerned about setting ourselves in that direction without kind of more knowledge, or like even understanding what budget implications there are. And I just remind everybody that we, I do recognize that this is in the, there is a reference to it. It's not a super-specific reference, though, to our priorities, but we have a whole bunch of other priorities. Bylaw renewal, of which I think there's five or six that are top priority. The housing issue that's going to consume our planner, where we have to do an OCP change and a zoning change this year. The buffer land is still out there, is unresolved. We have an issue like short-term rentals that we still have to do, and then whatever else comes our way. So I'm concerned about setting ourselves out for a huge task for staff. Now, the one other thing, Mr. Donaldson sort of tweaked me to this, is if we're going to make a change that could impact property owners, there's probably a level of consultation that has to happen, or should happen as well. And I want to just reference one of the pages here from the section from the Green Bylaw Toolkit. Again, do we do this ourselves? I'm not sure, but what it says in the, in the Bylaw Toolkit is activities that could, you know, trigger the wrapper includes building construction, renovations or repairs to existing buildings that expand the footprint, cutting and removing of trees, grading, removing, or depositing of soil and other material. So there's a range of activities that this could trigger. So again, it's not to be taken lightly, both in terms of workload and potential impact, so.
I might just respond to say, that's correct. The current regulations affect all of those things on page 170. So those are, that's what's happening now, but right now, we have all the process to go through to look at it. But that is basically the definition of the activities that you restrict and we restrict today. So that doesn't change, but appreciate your comments.
Counselor Epp, when, I have one idea, but I will not hog the mic anymore, the floor anymore, so.
Mary Little?
Yeah, thank you. I too am in favor of protecting our riparian areas and watercourses, protecting biodiversity, aquifer recharge. I thought in Michozen that we had very good guidelines regarding protection of watercourses. But with this motion, I'm really concerned about the complexity of the issue and some of the outstanding questions, like, how does this, we're going to have to do changes to our OCP. This is going to set up a whole new set of guidelines. What does this mean to property owners? As Counselor Shukin said, we have a duty to consult with the, with property owners. The zoning, at the end of the resolution, it says plus zoning. Who's to decide that zoning? Is that MEAS? Is that council? Is that our planner? And how would that be decided? I think a better idea would be to bring this to staff and for them to chew over it and bring out some options, including how long this is going to take and how much staff time. And as Counselor Shukin did say, we've got a lot on the plate for the planner to do. She's in here double the amount that she was before, and we want to be able to get some of those other priorities. And this is in no way meaning that I don't, I don't encourage, and that I'm not in favor of protection of riparian areas. Absolutely, I am. Thank you.
Counselor Donaldson?
Thank you. It was only about two years ago that I learned what SPEA really was, and that was due to the original proposal of Buckingham. And we did a walkabout, we looked at lots of maps, and it was, it was very well thought out in the original plan. Since then, I understand there's been some misgivings of what's taking place on that property. I understand that we do have three DPAs in Michozen. We have one for the slopes along the shoreline. We have one in my neighborhood, in the floodplains, and we have, what is the third one? The village area. And they are all restrictive of what you can and cannot do in those three areas as to any part of your property. It is a process you have to go through and follow. So staff guides that process. The riparian zones for the whole community is what we've adopted from the provincial regulations, which is 30 meters either side of a watercourse, like a creek, at the high-water mark. And that applies to the floodplain. I, this is an area I'm concerned about, because going, those people are heavily restricted along this stretch. And then we apply it to everyone else's properties, whether they're developing or renovating, or whatever they're going to do. That's why we have staff. Staff could actually bring in things like SPEA. They could ask for an environmental assessment. I have faith that our staff are professional in that regard. We also have engineers on, on contract with us, an engineer firm that actually has quite a large asset of professionals that they can, they can tap into as well. Certainly understand the misgivings of my colleagues, of the many layers that this could, could open up. We don't have to look too far to see how another community does not adopt anything from the provincial regulations and has excavators and creeks and such. That is a concern. We're so far ahead of that, but we're downstream of all that. A lot of this, it would be great if people that are really concerned about, maybe we are not doing our part, maybe need to go upstream and lobby other governments as well, and do some education with them to say, hey, you know, your activities affect everybody, including the biodiversity of, and creeksides and whatnot, as things are being destroyed. We are doing a great job here. Yes, we can always do better. I think as a region, we can do far better. But honestly, I believe our staff are doing a great job, and I have faith that they, they will take direction from us if we, we would like them to do more consulting with SPEA or whatever. This is not an area of expertise of mine. Yeah, those are just some thoughts. It's not particularly one way or the other, but I'm very cautious that.
Well, I think that, you know, I like the idea of staff looking into it, but I just don't think that now is the time, since we have so much on the table, to fit in with our priorities for this year, for this coming up. I think maybe we can get through the bylaws and the things that we have set as our priorities for this year, that this would be something that, that we could look into in next year's priorities for the, for the last year of our term. Because it is, to me, it's going, is going to take a huge amount of staff time to do this. I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to look into it, because, you know, it's, we need to protect our, our watercourses. And, but we do have, we do have regulations in place that, that, as Counselor Donaldson said, I'm confident that our staff will ask for further investigation into things if there's issues. But I don't want to take it off the table. I just think that we just should, should defer it for a time until our staff is able to, to look into it in the depth that it needs to be looked into. Counselor Gray?
Well, thanks very much for the comments. I was actually thinking, people might ask questions, then we move the motion and discuss it. So it's a little bit lame now to move the motion. The, but I would offer the following. I think four to five of us think this is an important issue, riparian protection, that is, and the care of our watersheds, and the recharge in the aquifer and that. So that's good to hear. And I appreciate what Mary Little is saying about, you know, get the staff to scope it out, but, you know, get the staff to scope it out, but, you know, don't go so far. I wasn't actually meaning, Counselor Shukin, that we would be writing drafting bylaws. I was simply asking, could the staff investigate this? You know, take a look at it. I guess this came from me, ask actually, take a look at it and tell us, give us a sense of the scope of this, of this issue. So I really in line, Mary Little, with what you were advocating. I didn't expect people to go off and prepare legislation or everything, but tell us, this is the kind of thing that you would need to do to get this done. This is what the process would look like. What I'm thinking is that the longest journey starts with the first step. And just asking people to take a look at it and give us a go. So I'm going to move the motion that the committee of the whole recommend to council that staff investigate applying local government riparian area regulations in Michozen enacted through environmental development permit areas plus zoning.
Okay, it's a motion. Do we have a second or?
Further discussion?
Seconded by Counselor Shukin for discussion?
The, yeah, I mean, your, Counselor Gray's point is taken about the word investigate. Even if we did that, that has to be put in the priority list of all the other things going on with staff right now. One of the other, again, Counselor, Counselor Donaldson mentioned the layers here. But one of the other layers that would be involved in this is the potential of mapping and mapping the individual creeks. And which again is, yeah, a significant task. I wonder, yeah, I, the other thing I wonder about is whether policy might actually be helpful in certain ways. But I don't want to throw that one awilly-nilly just because I think that's also work as well. But, yeah, so, yeah, I'd be curious to, yeah, if there's any more comments. Yeah.
Mary Little?
Yeah, thank you. And I actually like the idea of Counselor Epp is, is this is an important issue. Many of us have spoken to it and are committed to protecting our, our waterways and streams and aquifer recharge and biodiversity. If this could be brought back next year, in our last year, when we've got some of these other significant things that we've, we've identified that are in the works, I think that would be really great. I think we can rely on Counselor Gray to keep track of it and to bring it back. Thank you.
Counselor Gray?
Just a final comment. Mapping is not required in this particular approach. Some of the other approaches, they have to map and name each, each creek and all that. But this one not so much, is my understanding. But again, investigating, we just confirmed that. But I don't believe that's required. And that was why I chose this one to, we talked about this one.
Counselor Shukin?
You know, just following up in Mary Little's comments, I'm willing to support it so long as it does not jump to the top of the priority list. We have to execute a whole bunch of other items before, before we get to this one. Again, I echo that. I think that there's significant, yeah, I'm totally in support of strengthening riparian protections, but there's a whole bunch of other things that we have to do as well, so.
Right. There isn't any more discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's Counselor Donaldson and Mary Little opposed. All right, we're moving on to community planning. So over to you, Counselor Shukin.
Great. Thank you very much. There's a few matters, the big one being the development variance permit. And then after that, I'll go to my own report, which is a verbal report. So within the package is a DVP for 4764 Cardsview Terrace. This is requested to look at a front yard variance for an accessory building for the state of the distance, the, within the land use bylaw of 7.5 meters to either 6.9 meters, shrinking it then, 6.9 meters or 6.3 meters based on two presented options. This comes as a result of the property owners wishing to develop a small accessory building roughly 22 by 20 feet, which would be adjacent to a rock wall. And this is not just a rock wall, it is also supporting soil, trees, and the existing house. Now, I don't want to dwell too long in the technical aspects of this. My own suggestion would be that we continue our practice of doing a site visit, just so we are consistent. And then also, I would recommend that we, from my reading, option one is recommended by the planner. Seems sound to me, and this would initiate a mailout to the neighbors regarding the variance and the distances, the variance distances of 6.3 meters and 6.9 meters. And a site visit, yes.
Counselor Donaldson?
I'd second that.
Okay, you have a motion for option one, recommended option. All in favor?
And, and also that staff arranges with the property owners a site visit as soon as possible.
Okay, we have that done? Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Go through my update here. So I think it was on January 20th that council passed a motion that Counselor Donaldson and I would form a subcommittee that would look at key matters around the school. So that report is underway, and hopefully we will have a draft in March at some point. Thanks to staff for an earlier meeting, and Counselor Donaldson and I are going to meet further with staff. And again, we're looking at matters like the vision, revenue, and what we can expect in terms of the future, and a discussion on renting versus leasing, also how bookings are going to be managed in the future. So that is coming along. Turning to Parks and Trails, I should let folks know that we are continuing to recruit for vacant positions with Parks and Trails, but also healthy communities as well, and also a trails coordinator. So if, if there's anybody within the room or anybody in the room knows anybody who might be interested in being a participant, please let folks know they can apply through the district. PTAS is interested in exploring a program that was actually in place or reigniting a program that was in place a number of years ago. And this is a parks steward program. And so basically, it operates in, you find a volunteer who regularly walks a set trail, and they become our eyes and ears in that area, and they report any issues that they see to the trails coordinator, and then that goes to staff. So we're, we have a position description, and the chair of PTAS and myself are going to sit down with Mr. Payette and work out some of the details on that one.
So do those, question, those parks stewards then, are they going to be covered under the district insurance policy?
That's a key issue, yes, that we have to do, yeah.
I think it's a great idea because it certainly takes some of the load off the Parks and Trails Committee. We have a lot of trails to cover, so.
Totally. And, and the thing is, eyes and ears could be simply, you know, a trail is getting to be overgrown, we have to think about work party or something, or there's a big tree that's fallen and more action needs to be taken, so, yeah.
So not actual physical?
You know, again, that's something we'll have to work out with Mr. Payette.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Really a few more points. The Parks and Trails Master Plan process is underway, and what we have done at PTAS is we separated, created a subcommittee to look at technical issues like what our park standards are, are they still in place? And are they still viable? Management plans for, the plan is to have management plans for each of the both parks and the trails. And then a look at future issues that we may have to contend with. And big thing is, we're going to be seeing a lot of growth on the borders of Michozen. So how is that going to impact Parks and Trails? For example, electric bikes, mountain bikes, commercial dog walkers. How should we be dealing with stuff like that? And we have also appointed three individuals to help both with writing and also mapping as well. So we're underway with that. Duke Road East, we're continuing explorer, to explore both the roadside trail and the potential of other safety elements in Duke Road East. And we're doing that now with the benefit of a survey that was done late last year. So there's a meeting forthcoming with Mr. Payette and our engineer, and we'll take a closer look at that. One thing I have to say is that no decision has been made yet to pursue a roadside trail on Duke Road East. And that decision will be made by people at this table. So there'll be a recommendation coming from PTAS. I will be making a request tomorrow for some funding to explore that further and look forward to your adjudication of that request, so. Big thing is, is that everyone's really clear that pedestrian safety is a big issue. And the meeting that we held on January 31st, full room, almost 50 people in the room, that, that came out loud and clearly that, that there is a concern on Duke Road East, so. And I'll just get back to Weir Beach, and I might ask Mr. Payette for, so the Weir Beach Trail was, was fixed this summer. And what happened, staff are well aware of this, and they're working on a, on a fix. But we had a big storm, I think it was in late October, that did wash out the lower portion of Weir Beach stairs. And I've asked Mr. Payette about this and if we can get a solution put in place. It's, it is tricky, I have to say, and we found that out clearly from the experience. Clearly, high tide and a storm just was, was a bad combination. So I understand that staff are working to address this and any further. Now, Mr. Payette, I'm going to put you on the spot too. What was the cost of the, just if, ask in response to the question that we had earlier?
Um, I can confirm, but I think it was 23, 23,000. Twenty-three grand for the stairs.
Like 23,000?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's what it was, but I can confirm that. So, so the staff looked at it after the storm. Most of the structure is intact except for the base. I would call the base there at the beach. Got washed away, that got sort of undercut, I guess, and pulled rocks out from beneath. So that's unfortunate, that was quite a storm. And so actually, the neighbor, Adrian, I met with Gord as well. He's, he's an engineer. And they believe that if we drill into the rock, the adjacent rock is right at the base, and, and not utilize the wire mesh routine, that didn't work so well, that that would be secure for sort of a base step for the wooden stairs. The wooden stairs are in pretty good shape, actually, as they are now. So they weathered the storm, I guess. And there, there's lots of discussion about the, if we're going to use seed or plants or native plants for the banks. And so we're keeping a close eye on that and the trees as well, so. Lots of attention to the, to the nature. And there's a plan for the base of the stairs. Cost, I think probably between $3,000 and $8,000 to put cement fortification at the bottom of the stairs. That's where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Payette. That's, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Right, next to the environment and natural areas sections. So Counselor Gray, take it away.
So I had just a couple of things to report. One was just to mention the seminar on the subdivision process in February 26th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. I think that'll be interesting to many people. And then the draft active transportation plan is, I'm not sure if we're calling it open house or a meeting, on Wednesday, March 5th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And there's some budget information then too, that evening. So I had a proposal here. I heard from the, well, it's actually the newspaper, but was contacted about the District of Sanich and the City of Langford councils. Both have voted unanimously in favor of a B.C. municipality pushing the government B.C. to enshrine its coastal marine strategy into law. And counsel may remember, so I've got some package here. And I wonder, Counselor Shukin, could I grab one of those? So I expect counsel remembers that we sent a letter in support of the coastal marine strategy some time ago when we were consulted about it. That was back in April 14th to 2023. And, and, and the coastal marine strategy was completed. And, and there's a little handout here with some of the details. I think it was in your, in your package, but I thought it'd be good to have this information here. The idea behind it is a healthy coast, resilient to climate change, thriving coastal economies and communities, and informed governance. And the, there's a lot of threats to the B.C. coast, as we know, including but not limited to marine plastics and derelict vessels, shoreline development, ship traffic, and of course, climate change. And we're going to be on the front line of some of that. Maybe the washout of the Weir Beach stairs is part of it, I'm not sure. So the coastal marine strategy was completed. It had our kind of input, First Nations were involved as well. And the idea being to protect the coast and keep it special. The, you can see in your package, the table of contents, all the different areas that were addressed. But I would like to draw your attention to two things in particular. There's a graphic here, it's labeled page 12, and it shows you all the areas where the province is saying, we're probably going to need to regulate. And the purpose of the motion is for us to take the position, yeah, that's a good idea, regulate. And so the areas are where they're, I believe, understanding the need to update or improve their regulations to match the coastal marine stewardship plan, could be environmental assessments, economic developments, protected areas, marine tenures, climate preparation, seafood processing, emergency management, ferries, coastal transportation, restoration, and waste management, even tourism. So there's lots there. And then if you turn the page, because I mentioned the vision, healthy coastal marine ecosystems, resilience to climate change, thriving coastal economies and communities, and informed governance. And then on the page, it was page 53 of the document, is what they call a robust toolkit. And laying out there, they're making the note that a key challenge to coastal management in British Columbia is the absence of a legal framework specifically designed to govern and manage coastal marine areas. And they're laying out a process there. It'll be a little while before regulation comes into play. But the object of the motion that I'm proposing we consider this evening is to say, yep, the strategy looks pretty good. And we urge you to move forward with putting regulations in place to meet the, meet the terms of the coastal marine strategy. So maybe I'll make the motion, the committee of the whole recommends council endorse a resolution in support of B.C. legislating its coastal marine strategy for AVIC and then UBCM.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second for that? Seconded by Counselor Donaldson, moved by Counselor Gray.
So I've been in touch with the two counselors who put it this far, Mary Wagner in Langford and Teal Bondrof Jones in Sanich. And they're planning, I think, similar to the, the resolution going forward on Goose, the Goose Call, that we talk to our colleagues and see if we can encourage other people. So this is sort of part of that process.
Any more discussion on the motion? Mary Little?
So the B.C. coastal marine strategy is a B.C. government document initiative. And so what, what this motion implies, it really points to the absence of the legal framework. And it says that, that, that it's all well and good to have a strategy, but you need a legal framework to keep it enforceable. Okay, yeah.
So everyone?
I'd support this, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if there isn't any more discussion on that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Thank you. I wanted to, rather than... I wanted to, uh, provide an update on the Moralese Meadow B C hydro re-greening grant. So we'd supported the Moralese group in, um, applying for, and eventually they received a grant to, um, put native plants in the Moralese Meadow. And then the B C Hydro provided some funding. The Moralese Meadow Group provided a lot of work to, to, um, prepare the area and then plant the plants and, and the use of mulch and things. And the native plants were supplied by Machoson's very own, um, satin flower nursery. So that was kind of nice. In the end, they spent $3,170.95. And, um, it, it's, I think, a great thing that they've done over there. People have had a look. I was, uh, told that on, um, the first day of the farmer's market, which I believe is Mother's Day, there's an annual opening at the Meadow and everybody's welcome to join. Come and take a look at what's, what's happened there and things will be greening up at about that time. I wanted to just, um, tell people that M E S K has begun some discussions on biodiversity and national, natural assets plan, also part of our strategic priorities list. I'm hoping we'll be able to, to work away at that without any financial impact or impact on the staff, by the way. Um, and then just to note that the C R D Goose Watch happened on Monday, February 3rd, and local firms, um, played a role in that. We've got that, um, motion going forward to A V E C about a goose call. But, um, part of the decision-making at the C R D level, and Mary Little will know, um, is based on the data that they collect. At the moment, they oppose a goose call, but that may change, I suppose, depending on the results of these kinds of surveys. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to wish everyone happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah, same. I do want to congratulate all those, all those people that worked so hard on Moralese Meadow. You see them out there in all kinds of weather. It's just incredible how much work they've put into that, that patch of, of land.
Thank you.
It's going to be beautiful. Okay.
So that's a wrap for me, thanks.
That's it for you. Okay, let's on to Public Works and Protective Services. Um, well, first of all, I was a big thank you to Public Works crew for the roads and, uh, and all the work in the, in the snow. It's just always amazing how good Machoson's roads are compared to every, everybody else. I know my husband, uh, had firsthand experience after a couple of days after the snow, he thought, oh, I'm going to go into Langford, right? And so he's driving along and he got to the border and, uh, and a pickup in front of him did three donuts. And so he just turned right around, came home, one other day. And I think that was the case of, of anyone pretty much who tried to, tried to come in or out. It was, uh, yeah, interesting. So, uh, seniors association is continuing with all their, their activities that they have. Uh, there's a fraud prevention presentation on the 12th this week, caregiver support group meeting on the 20th, and a housing and care continuum, uh, on February 27th. So, uh, a lot of those programs are just really valuable for information for people and they don't have to go far to, to get that, just to the seniors resource center in the, in the school. Uh, as councillor Gray mentioned, the district will be holding, uh, an open house and engagement session for the active transportation network plan. Dan Casey from Urban Systems, uh, will be here to talk about it. And, uh, people can come and, and ask questions. It'll be similar to the one that they had at, at Machoson Day, uh, just gathering more input. And then they expect to have the plan completed before the end of March. So, um, that should be nice to, to see how they made out with that. Uh, and there's also going to be a, us, another survey. And the information will be in the news and also, uh, on, online on, on the, um, district page. So hopefully people will, will fill that out as well. And if people, you know, don't have the access to the web and so maybe they can send, send a note with their, like, any recommendations they have, but.
Councillor. Sorry, question. So this event will be held in the gym?
No, it's going to be here in the chambers.
Okay.
Yes, I should have mentioned that. It'll be in the chambers, uh, the same evening. Uh, CFO, um, Jeffrey Creek is going to be here to answer questions about the budget and, and upcoming taxes and so on. So since we don't have as what we used to have as the big, um, open house budget meeting, this is going to be a little scaled down version of that, but I'll still be welcoming the public to come in and, uh, and, and ask questions from, from him.
And, uh, it'll be a drop-in session, not like a presentation type thing?
No, it'll be a drop-in session from 4:00 to 8:00.
Okay.
On March 5th, right here. Uh, and then councillor Gray and I both attended, uh, Western Canada Marine Response Corporation. It was a spill exercise, uh, again, that they conducted down, downtown at the Laurel Point Inn. We both had gone to that in the past. This time they didn't have the coinciding, uh, ships and the whole thing going on out in Esquimalt Harbor like they did last time. So, but it's still, uh, it's quite interesting to, to see how they all, they set it up. And they do it for a few days. But one of the biggest, uh, things that we, we learned, uh, that day was that, which we weren't sure about the last time, was about the response of, of oil spills on our shore and what that impact was going to be. And, and the, and they definitely said that the W C M R C, uh, were going to be responsible for cleaning up the, the shoreline on the basis of a provincial team that will, would come out and check out the shore, shoreline and see where the areas that they needed to be focusing on were and get in touch with them. And then they, in turn, come and, and do that. And also inform the public if there is any dangers to health, that any areas that needed to be evacuated, then that would work through our emergency services. I know that the fire chief has been involved, uh, with Beach Bay and, and with others to work also on the safety at councillor Gray.
And just to add to that, of course, that was big news, um, the idea that W M R C would be involved in the shoreline. But they, they did also mention there's going to be an open house, which we would be invited to at, at Shianu, um, later in the spring. And I spoke to Michael Lowry and I, I've forgotten his title, but he's a communications liaison person. And, and, um, he would be open to coming to council. And I wonder, Mary Little, if, if you would appreciate that? We had talked about that previously. Many things have happened since then, whether they should come to council or come to committee of the whole. But he's, uh, he'd be happy to do that if that makes sense for everyone, just to kind of go through the whole thing. Council, committee of the whole. Council, okay. I'll talk to our deputy corporate officer. I'll get something arranged. But it was a very interesting, um, event to be at. What was striking to me was the size of the oil spill. It was monstrous. Um, it, and it was one big glob that split into two globs and went up the coast as they wa, they kind of are modeling it all with the wind and the waves and everything. Split into two big pieces and eventually washed ashore and, uh, despoiled Oak Bay and then eventually came down and hit Machoson. It was pretty, pretty impressive, a disaster that didn't happen, thank goodness. But a lot of people well organized to care for it and work on it.
Yeah.
Thanks for raising.
It's pretty amazing how they, um, when we saw it, uh, on the screen, you know, how it did dissipate, uh, all over the place. It just spread all over the place in different areas according to, but that's what they look at is the tides and the currents, uh, that are happening so that they, they can predict where a spill is going to go. Councillor Shookin.
From the time, just on this dissipation thing, from the time this spill happened to when it hit the beach, what was the timeframe? Did they?
Do you remember?
The spill, I think, happened two days before the event that we were at. So things had been happening already. And then, um, by the time, sorry, we were there, it had split into two very large areas, like 100 kilometer square type areas. It, the spill had happened, or was modeled to have happened at Constance Bank and then began moving. Um, we saw though a simulation of, I mean, the whole thing is simulated, but even I think the slide that we saw, they were speeding it up so we could see, you know, where it would go. Um, so the, so the actual hitting of the shore was happening a little bit in speed up time, so I don't know. There was a couple of days for it to sort of get it to where it was and then, and then from there.
Well, and of course, it totally depends on the weather and the currents, uh, of that day, that particular time and day. So it would be, it would vary totally. When everything, they did say, cause I think councillor Gray asked about, um, about the wind speed, you know, the, that we've talked a lot about the fact that the boats wouldn't be able to go out if the wind was more than, I think, 28 kilometers an hour, which it very often is out, out off the west coast. But he did say that while the smaller boats wouldn't be able to go out, that the large boats that they do have would still be out and they can go out in any kind of weather, he said, basically. So while they maybe wouldn't be able to send out their, their smaller ones that scoop up the oil and so on, and the waves would go over the, the, um, the, what do they, what do they call those, soaker things?
The booms.
I was going to say booms, yeah, the booms. But, but they still would be able to be out there at least monitoring, uh, what's going on.
Yeah, kind of like, so the big ship would go out and watch and see what's going to happen and prepare the thought process, I guess, for the response, which would happen in another time.
So and I also had a few notes from, uh, from the fire chief, who's way on a much needed, uh, vacation this week. So she was just mentioning about the schools, far as rentals, pickleballs now and they're five to six days a week. Uh, the coast guard had, had rented, uh, it for three weeks and now they want another three weeks, uh, ongoing as dog training, jiu-jitsu, west, west shore parks and rep classes. Um, West Shore, of course, is offering first aid classes as well. And she, she said one first aid class, they advertised, uh, sold out in 23 hours. So it's, uh, it's really interesting how, how people are just really all over the classes being offered there, particularly by, by the west shore parks and rec. So, and other fire courses have started too. Uh, as far as the emergency program, I think she said there's more grants, uh, on the way for various things. The fire department had 59 calls in January. Uh, they have new recruit training in full swing. And as far as, as ice, uh, they say they've had a lot of calls for falls. They've had three structure fires this month and, and a couple of, of rescue calls. Speaking of calls, or, or ice, I should know because, uh, my daughter just slipped on ice and broke her ankle. So it's, uh, yeah, it is, uh, something to watch and they certainly have had a lot of calls from people that went down in the, in the snow. And that's all for my report, so.
Councillor, could I just ask a question? About the active transportation net plan? We mentioned that at, I think, perhaps the last meeting, can't remember, committee of the whole or budget somewhere, about the, the roadside trails are being dealt with through the active transportation plan. But, um, Duke Road East seems to be handled by T, P Task. But are we switching over to a certain point or how is? Like the active transportation come, will come with some recommendations about where our priorities ought to be? And I'm just looking at the notes from the P Task, there's still a lot going on there. Even, I think this meeting happened after we clarified that. How are we, how are we inter, talking the two, or perhaps it's coming up in the budget meeting tomorrow?
Well, it's the connectivity, but I guess that'll be a good thing to bring up, uh, at the public engagement session.
Okay.
Is, is how it's all going to, uh, going to work out.
Okay, thank.
Councillor Donaldson?
Oh, thank you for your report. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, one of our strategic priorities was, uh, community engagement. And when we met in early December to talk about that, uh, we kind of struck a subcommittee of yourself, the C A O and myself. And with that, we were going to have something on the model of ideas there. And, uh, so I'm, I'm curious, actually, we're having the open house, uh, concept of the, um, the plan from the, um, active transportation. And now I'm, I see, uh, as a finance chair, I had no idea that, uh, we were doing something finance related as well. But we seem to have, um, digressed away from the other priorities we talked about at that time and maybe through the chair to councillor Shookin. I can't remember, um, if we, when we, if we have updated as we've edited and, and put more thought into those priorities. Did we, um, decide not to do housing, uh, anything to do with the school? Because we talked about maybe something in, in the gym or whatever. So as we talk about public engagement being, uh, an, something we pride ourselves in with communication, I really feel, um, taken aback that I've not been included in this, in this so-called subcommittee that we're supposed to have. And now as a finance chair, we're actually having an open house, which until now I had no idea.
Well, it just came up when we were talking about, actually, it was at a public works meeting and we were talking about this engagement and just, it was just a spur of the moment thing that we were trying to figure out how we could maybe get more people out and just at the time. So it just came out and, and, uh, we were here and, and so this mentioned, asked, asked the CFO, he might be interested in something like that. So that's all that came up and it wasn't anything structured or it was just a, it was basically just an idea. And as far as the other, we did bring up the idea of having more, more things at it, but it just, uh, with the time constraints, it just doesn't, didn't seem like it was going to be worked out. And that's, uh, unfortunate, we should have, uh.
Yeah, I don't work in the shadows, I work with the team. And I, so I really feel offended that I've not been included in this. As, as a council, we sat for several hours going through that. And, and this is not the first time, like, can you, in, uh, reading your, um, the minutes from Healthy Communities, uh, this council appointed a person to sit on the Capital West accessibility. And it was mentioned in a public meeting recently that we have appointed this person and that that person would be reporting back to council. Yet when I read Healthy Communities, uh, we're going to, or you are going to invite the person to come and speak with, um, Healthy Communities. And yet I have this accessibility, um, appointment, which seems to be disregarded as well. So communication seems to be lapsy and it's offensive, I have to say. So to not be included in a change on what we were going to do there as part of our strategic priority, I think we need to regroup and, uh, be more cognizant of including everyone.
Well, thank you, you're entitled for your opinion. Mary Little?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was just wondering, uh, councillor Shookin, um, if there's anything else to do with the school, uh, that has come out with your meetings thus far that we could include in the, uh, um, open house? Is there, was, was there anything that, that, um, some key question that we should ask community members? Is there anything that we want their opinion on at this point? Like name of a school, uh, that kind of thing? Is, sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I, I would have to think about that and, and maybe when the report is finalized, we can, you know, come up with, um, you know, you'll have some, hmm, ha, have some sort of, uh, segments of information that we actually do want to consult on. But, yeah, you know, the, the only thing I'm leery of is how getting the information together and again, structuring the involvement. I, like, again, it's poster boards, I suppose, is what we could do. But, yeah, um, I mean, we, and it's taking place in this room too, so just have to be careful of space. I, yeah, I'm not sure.
Thank you. All right, move on to the finance committee.
Thank you. So we have, um, lots of stuff going on. It, it feels like, um, agriculture under that particular portfolio, we do have the resolutions already been submitted, thanks to, um, our deputy corporate officer, who's spent a lot of time with me on, uh, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, uh, being the conduit to, uh, A V E C personnel, so that we were doing, um, putting it together in, in a more fulsome manner. And thanks to council for bringing it back to me, because I was sitting at home repairing from, uh, some fractures. Uh, I, I was just a guess that we actually had more work to do. Uh, but nevertheless, I continue to learn about these sorts of things. With that, as, uh, councillor Gray had suggested or had mentioned in his report, there are two surveys, one is just completed and it was the winter survey, uh, February 3rd and 4th, um, that the C R D is looking, um, for information from people to keep a watchful eye out. Uh, it's actually a very good story, the way it's written out. But it does mean, um, being aware of where geese are in your community, um, on all different lays of, of the land. The next survey will be, uh, June 23rd to the 27th, when, uh, geese will molt and so they don't take flight and they're not on the move. Um, so the C R D does want this information. This will certainly help, um, the resolution that is going to A V E C and then hopefully, uh, being, um, moved on to U B C M. So I encourage people, we got a mail out ourselves, it's also online, so it's easy to find, uh, the district website, also has the links there too, uh, for that. And, uh, the, um, Reimagine is an organization that, it's a grassroots organization in the west shore that has been in touch with our agriculture advisory, uh, select committee, um, as we are working with a variety of different, um, agriculture-related awareness campaigns. There's a C D Saturday coming up again, this is their second time, that'll be at Belmont. There's a CD Saturday coming up again, this is their second time, that'll be at Belmont High School. Same as a building incredible soil, which is, one is on March 8th, the other one's March 13th and a compost basics, April 12th. All of these are being pushed out on Facebook, but I noticed even coming in tonight, the brochures and whatnot are on the counter in the foyer of the building here. So for people to take notice of that, these are really great programs. We did support Reimagine during the grant and aid process last year. They're a very hardworking group and there's more to come with that. They're working on a couple of other projects with us as well to promote food security in the west shore area. West Shore Parts Recreation, I have the privilege to be in the finance chair on the board for this coming year. Fitness at Macho's and School, it has been an absolute hit, speaking with the CAO of West Shore Parts Rec. So far, we've had in excess of two hundred people responding to the survey. And that was as of two weeks ago, so it is open until February 15th, so this week. So having more input of different kinds of programs. We're in there now with West Shore till the end of April and hopefully we'll continue with that because I'm getting lots of, lots of emails and people stopping in the street, being very happy that we're doing some recreational programs. And just today, I got a newsletter emailed to me from West Shore, pushing out all the different layers of first aid as well. So that is, that's exciting too, to see the school being used more. Urban Rec Beach volleyball proposal came in. You may recall last year when I reported out where the pickleball courts were going to be is where our volleyball pit was and it, we didn't realize how popular it was. Anyway, so there was an outpour of like, we want that to come back. Easy enough to do, they're going to, the board is considering it. There's no agreements made yet, they did a very passionate presentation on this. There's not a lot of cost to it, they will incur all the costs. If it's, if people decide in the end it's not something they want, it's easily dismantled, dismantled, it's mostly sand. And then there'll be some nets to keep golf balls out from, from the players of the volleyball. Aquatic staff gave a passionate presentation as well. The pool is at a maximum usage rate now, so they're looking at other creative options, adding an hour earlier in the morning or an hour later in the day, depending on staff capacity. Different programs that are specialized, like women's only or trans queer only allotments. One of our board members' daughter was involved with, is involved with guiding and they were having a sleepover plus they're having a smoke party, so they're sleeping somewhere in the building. So fun things like that to just maximize the fun things that can be done there. Something that is new that the younger staff have come up with is to do some triathlon training. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. These are just ideas, they still have to plan out a little bit more what's involved. And we got a press release today to do with the Trails Master Plan and there's some dates for public engagements. So to take note of that, I will ask our staff to put this also on the website so that our public has access to it. It's important for people's opinions to be known. We put a lot of money into the West Shore Parts Recreation, so they're looking for satellite areas to expand because the facility is maxing out, which is one of the reasons I had suggested they come and see us about our gymnasium. So that's good to know that things are coming together. But clearly, they want more input for this company that is doing the master plan update for the west shore region. Pickleball courts, we did not get BC Gaming Grant, however, we were cognizant of putting money into the budget just the same, in case we didn't. And so we do have money available for that. And the project timeline, hopefully not to have too many delays, is expected to be open late May. So keep your eyes and ears open for that. Greater Victoria Public Library seeing an increase in digital borrowing of materials. I think this is probably because it's wintertime, but also it's just the state of technology now. Lots of, lots of periodicals and educational products that can be obtained through that manner. An increase in cardholders throughout the thirteen, not thirteen, ten sites in the thirteen municipalities. Only ten municipalities actually have the Greater Victoria Public Library. The other two have Vancouver Island Regional Library, which is friends of ours. Staffing updates, hiring more staff as it becomes available. We're still feeling the challenge of staffing, but we've got twelve new auxiliary assistants. The board also has hired a safety and security person specifically for the central branch, where they have a lot of challenges with our vulnerable community, seeking some refuge and managing frontline disruptions and that sort of thing. So working with the local police agencies as well. Again, we put money into this in all our branches, so these are things for us to be aware of where some of that money is going. Wanafuka Water Distribution Commission is going through a little bit of a staff restructuring. We had two corporate service people at our meeting. We are no longer having lunch meetings, they're in the afternoons on a monthly basis unless otherwise indicated to us. It was reported out that a reservoir is at ninety-four percent capacity and there's still more rains to come. So we expect to, we're at this point above our five-year minimum, so we expect to be in good shape in the coming months. And then just terms of reference for commission is being updated, just, these are hell keeping things. And the board commissioners brought a motion together before Christmas just to investigate remuneration as none of the, there's five board members and they do not receive any sorts of remuneration. And so staff is looking into that, however, that is reviewed every three to five years and the next one is due just prior to the election. So not to be seen to giving ourselves raises right now, right now we volunteer. And Wanafuka Water Commission is unique in that it is similar to CRD in that they're collecting funds as well, whereas it's not just we get together for a board and discuss policy situations, but we do oversee a lot of others, decision making and a lot of input with the staff that is there. This would be only a $7,000 impact if it does go through. But we'll see what they come back with, with more of a report on that in future, future meetings. There were two articles I wrote for the Muse, one to promote vendors come out to the farmer's market. They're starting to look now, it's February, for the upcoming season as well as advertising it. There is a community tent there for growers who don't have a full six months worth of product to offer to the community. It'd be great to see more producers. We seem to have a decline of participants from our farms. So, and the other article I put in there was to push out the excitement of recreation happening in the town core. So I'm getting some responses on that as well, so that's exciting. I just wanted to also ask or maybe inquire with councillor Shook and comment you made earlier about e-bikes on trails. Are these our municipal trails or just the galloping goose? Or, and have there been concerns with horses or erosion and that sort of thing?
I have seen them, sorry, I have seen signs on our region, our trails, Macho's and trails. And I've also seen them, of course, on the galloping goose. The thing about e-bikes is, of course, the speed they travel, so, yes.
Yeah, the reason I ask is we had a, we had a situation, a couple of situations last year and Mayor Little will recall that some very angry equestrians, a group of equestrians that rode all the way out to Roche Cove and back into, well, my neighborhood actually, who had an encounter with a large group of e-bikes that were going fast, did not call out. I encouraged them, implored them, they were resistant to do it, to write a letter to CRD and they did get a favorable response. So CRD was going to be watching that, so we'll see what comes of that this year. So that's just on the galloping goose trail. So I was curious to know the impact on our trails as well, so thank you for that. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, we have, oh, sorry, Mayor Little?
Not to belabor things, I just had a couple of questions for councillor Donaldson. What's the state of the pool? Given the referendum that has just passed at the city of Victoria, it appears that you can spend hundreds of millions of dollars on repairing a pool. Uvic, because of the cost of repairing the pool, has decided to just close it, which is a great loss for that community and the varsity teams. What is the state of our pool at the West Shore Parts Recreation?
Well, so the one thing I have learned is pools and ice arenas never make money. They, it is a sinkhole of money. Our pool has, it has an interesting liner inside of it, which came from Italy of all places. That is needing repair. There are leaks and so they are addressing those. And when we did a big tour and I believe yourself went on a tour as well, I know the CAO did, we got to see the underbelly of what's going on. You can see some leakage and some reinforcement of holding the hot tub in its proper place and that sort of stuff. It's quite, it is very expensive. They are looking at some different, different things that they can line the pool with and that all depends on the longevity of it, the wear and tear. There's a certain amount of chemical in there as well. And anything like tile takes up more room, we can't make it smaller. I don't know, we have really much in the way of competitions there, it's not something that's been reported out. But the staff is definitely on top of it, always looking for grants, but very expensive. And so I was surprised actually, the Crystal Pool vote kind of went the way it did because it is a lot of money and we're seeing more of them wanting to be. There used to be one at Roche Rose, I believe it closed as well a number of years ago. So something that when we're thinking about presentations of doing outdoor pools, they are just a sinkhole of money. But if there's people that want to put money into it, I don't know, they're expensive.
And the second question is, the pickleball courts, are they covered?
No, we had, we had a company out of back east in Toronto called TTC or TCC and they were going to actually do like a big air bubble and they were going to manage it and everything. And this went on our talks with contracting with them for several months and then last minute they pulled out saying it wasn't viable for them. It wasn't going to cost us anything. That would have been awesome for the tennis and pickleball, but right now those will be outdoor courts.
And the matter of the Wanafuka remuneration is on the CRD board agenda for Wednesday.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Okay, we have one pink from Alison Le Duke writing in support of the Miesk recommendation regarding riparian areas. And we have no other business, so.
Motion to adjourn?
That was my question, motion to adjourn. Councillor Gray, seconded by Mayor Little, all in favor?